The Committee on Economic Development and Tourism come to order if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Dionne? Counsel Liberty LeBeau? Chairman Pereira?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Item one on the agenda is the citizen input, if we have any.
I have none.
No citizen input?
No.
Item two on the agenda is the minutes of the September 16th meeting. There's a motion to accept.
I make the motion to accept the minutes.
Second. Back if you call the roll.
Yes. Counselor Dionne? I mean, yes. Counsel Liberty LeBeau? And Chair Pereira?
Yes. Item number three on the agenda is an item that I actually filed, and I'll read it. Whereas part of the 16,000 acre southeast Massachusetts Bio Reserve is located in Fall River, and whereas the Bio Reserve is managed in a manager preserve the functionality of its large-scale ecosystem and promote biodiversity conservation, water protection, scientific and educational and recreational opportunities, and whereas the city of Fall River has a total of 22 miles of hiking trails that are available for public use, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Economic Development and Tourism convene with the city forester to discuss the amenities available at the southeastern Massachusetts Bio Reserve. And we have with us today Mike LaVasia, the forester, and the Director of Community Utilities, Paul Furlan. If you want to state your name and address for the record, Mr. LaVasia.
Sure, my name, Mike LaVasia, I'm the city's watershed forester. My address is 32 Pembroke Drive in North Dartmouth, Mass.
Paul Furlan, the Administrator of Community Utilities, 383 Rochester Street in Fall River, Mass. Thank you very much for having us. Here comes what?
You're welcome. Both Mr. Furlan and Mr. LaVasia have put together a PowerPoint presentation. And the reason that we're doing this is because I don't feel that all of the residents of Fall River are aware of what we have in the Bio Reserve as far as hiking trails. And given the fact, especially now with COVID, people are looking for things to do that is safe, and families want to get out and get out into the open air. I know now we're going into colder weather, but sometimes people like to trek through the snow all bundled up. So if you would like to provide your presentation to us, you may start.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, this was started by request from you, Counselor, for us to come in and kind of share what we have in the Bio Reserve. The Bio Reserve was originally created for the for both Fall River, Freetown State Forest, and other lands to come together to create this area. One thing that it does, you know, one thing that I want to remind you, so, you know, I work for the Water Department, Mike LaVasia is also works as the forester and project manager for the Water Department as well. So the Water Department, we have, we had our whole entire reservation on the other side of the North Wataupa Pond, which consisted of about 4,500 acres when the Bio Reserve was started. That land was originally bought for protection of the watershed. And that's what we, that's what the Bio Reserve helps us keep it that way. You know, some facts that some people don't know about the city. But about 50% of the city is either water or forest land. Our city is actually vast in size, the actually urban area, the city, it only makes up about 50% of the footprint of the city. So we do have a lot of great opportunities up there, but we do have some restrictions that we do like to keep in place for protection of our watershed and our, you know, pristinely good drinking water that we, that we have in this city. So with that, we can roll into this slide. Mike will, Mike is the resident expert on this. He was, he was around when the Bio Reserve was started, when it was, when it was talked about for many years. So, Mike?
Well, thanks very much, Counsel Pereira, for the opportunity to make this presentation. And I'm keenly excited about it because it's, the Bio Reserve is, in a sense, it's one of Fall River's best-kept secrets, and it really shouldn't be because it's public land, and so much of it has opportunities for people in all different facets. And especially, as you mentioned before during COVID, a lot of people sought open space. They sought big open places where they could be away from folks and isolate and, and get exercise and pursue some healthy things. So what is a Bio Reserve? A Bio Reserve is a large land area, it's permanently protected from development, and it's managed to ensure the long-term health of its natural resources. And part of that management involves restoration. There are some parts of the, of, well, I'm getting ahead. Where is this Bio Reserve? Our Bio Reserve is, starts at the east shore of North Wataupa Pond, so it isn't, it isn't including the west shore. It really starts at a, at a line, I can see the cursor, at a line somewhere at the top of Pond Swamp. And the Bio Reserve goes all the way north, well beyond Slab Ridge Road in Freetown, all the way up to Profile Rock, it goes to the northeast, all the way to Lakeville. The original footprint didn't include Lakeville, now it does include Lakeville. And then the Bio Reserve extends to the east, well into Freetown up to Bullock Road, and then extends to the south into Dartmouth. You'll see, if you look at the map, I apologize for the scale, it's a, it's a big Bio Reserve. It's 16,000 acres. But if you look at the southeastern corner, there's the town line of Dartmouth, and you can see it clips the Copacoot Reservoir. So we've got a bit of protected land, and, you know, part of the Bio Reserve exists in Dartmouth as well. City owns that portion, it's part of the city's water supply, watershed land. It's owned by the city, it's in the technical town of Dartmouth, so we're like any other landowner in Dartmouth. So who are our partners? The Bio Reserve is 16,000 acres. We, we became a part of the Bio Reserve with about 5,000 acres. The Trustees of Reservations, they're, they're a partner, they're a private nonprofit. Mass Wildlife and the Department of Conservation and Recreation are also partners. You'll know DCR is the Department of Conservation and Recreation. They're familiar to Fall River, they're the Freetown State Forest, their Heritage State Park, they're the ice rink, and even Mass Wildlife is familiar because Dave's, Dave's Beach and Copacoot are both, are both properties administered or owned by Mass Wildlife. So most of, the two state partners were familiar to us, the trustees not so familiar. So why was the, why was the Bio Reserve created, really, is, is one of the key questions. Bio Reserve, the idea of the Bio Reserve came about around, in the year 2000. Part of, part of the catalyst for the idea of the Bio Reserve was, was need. Economic development kind of drove the idea that the city needed to expand, and we'll see a, a map of this later, but the city needed more land for economic development growth. That became, you know, that, that we now know of that area is the Biotech Park. Timing, the idea of a Bio Reserve kind of percolated through the 60s and 70s. And then up in the 90s, Harvard School of Design actually did a project where they looked at the entire state of Massachusetts. They determined that this was, the biosphere, some people, in fact, some people actually call the Bio Reserve the biosphere, it's a misnomer, it's really not a biosphere. But the idea, again, came out of targeting or identifying an area in size large enough that would sustain the native flora and fauna of this area, of this region. And so, or of a region. The Harvard School of Design determined that there were 14 areas across the state, including Mass Military, Mile Standis State Forest, the Quabon Reservoir. It identified these areas that could, that could be these Bio Reserves. So that was, that was, that was at a, at a point where top state officials, you know, got that study, were mulling that over. Funding for it came out of the Open Space Bond Bill, that was kind of new back in the late 90s. And then there was also a campaign, $11 million actually came out of the Open Space Bond Bill, and, and $2 million came from the campaign. And they were willing partners. The Bio Reserve creation involved 3,800 acres in Fall River and Freetown that were privately owned, that were contiguous, that were forest land, and that were under heavy development pressure. And so, all owned by one owner, it was, it was the Hawes family, the Cushing and Sawmills. So not only was it one owner, which makes the negotiation much more convenient, but they were willing, they were, they were willing to consider the, the sale of this land for conservation. There were Sawmill Company, Sawmill Family, they have, you know, ties to conservation. You also had a city and state agency that were interested in spending the Open Space Bond money to, to advance their missions. And the private agencies was pretty much the trustees of reservations, who didn't really have roots in the local area, but was, was looking to do that. They were looking to initiate, you know, urban environmental education programming and some other initiatives that they had. And then the final, the final aspect is environmental advocacy. And again, that was provided by Buzzards Bay Coalition, who kind of brought these partners together. A good part of the Bio Reserve is in the Buzzards Bay. The Buzzards, the, the Bio Reserve actually splits over two watersheds, the Taunton River and the Buzzards Bay Watershed. Most of the Copacoot, well, all of the Copacoot is in the Buzzards Bay Watershed. The Copacoot drains toward the west branch of the, the Westport River, I mean, the east branch of the Westport River. And, and also Green Futures was involved at that point. So those, so the Bio Reserve was, was created because of, really, a once-in-a-generation or once-in-a-century alignment of all these different things. So what was accomplished with this Bio Reserve? The first, you know, big accomplishment was the creation of the Biotech Park. It's had different iterations and different names, it's been called the, maybe Executive Park or the Life Science Park. But this Bio Reserve, the combination of, of economic development and conservation allowed 300 acres to actually be cleaved off of the Freetown State Forest. The Freetown State Forest is, is protected land, it's quite large. And, but it's not sort of available for development, so it really needed a big idea and a partnership and a, and a real, so unity of conservation interests to agree that the trade was worth it, and it was kind of a trade-off. The 300-acre was pri, is pri, was primed, is prime developable land. It's in the process of being developed, some of it already has been, Amazon's up there and some other things. Also allowed, what was accomplished was the construction of Exit 8B. And, you know, folks remember that was, that was not an easy, you know, that took some time, but that actually got accomplished. And so it gave access to the Biotech Park right off 24, just beautiful access. 3,800 acres of forest land was newly protected, so the entire Cushing and Sawmill's Fall River holding and a lot of the Freetown holding was acquired by the state and by the, a little bit by the trustees, I'll show you later. And then, of course, the 2,800 acres of Water Department land from the east shore of the North Wataupa Pond to the Copacoot Reservoir and beyond was now all open for public access. And honestly, that was something that hadn't happened for 100 years. The land, you know, over time, you know, the Wataupa Reservation was kind of sealed up. I mean, you know, it wasn't open for, it wasn't open for legal activities, things happened out there, we all know. But, you know, the policy was no, no recreation on the, on the Wataupa Reservation. But the Wataupa Reservation had a big footprint, it was, it was a notable conservation parcel. I mean, the city, the city was so ahead of its time in the 18, you know, late 1800s, early 1900s, was so ahead of its time to protect the water supply. You know, what a, what a blessing it is that the, that the water supply itself is within the town. You know, other towns have great water supplies, New Bedford, for example, but New Bedford's water supply is in Rochester, Lakeville, and Middleboro. And, and, and Roach, you know, out of, out of the town. And, and so the unique thing that Fall River has is its own water resources within the town. So that's, that's great. In 1870, I'm sorry, was I?
Yep, nope, so, so what we're going to do now is just kind of take you through a little background of how, you know, the Fall River Water Department has gained some of the land that it's, that it has for protection of the water supply. You know, it started in the, to be truthful, started in the 1800s. The Water Works began in 1870, that's when the Fall River Water Department was created. The original pump station was built on the North Wataupa in 1873. Started out with Bedford Street area, where we purchased 40 acres, the Water Department, for the pump station. From there, shoreline parcels were acquired, as well as other parcels throughout the whole entire area. The Narrows Gate House, which is the small granite building on the side of 195 or the 24, off ramp off 195, was constructed in 1908 to keep the north and south Wataupa separate. Intercepted drains, so that lodge area that was cleared about a couple of years ago on the side of Route 24, that's the interceptor drain that stops any drainage coming from the city down into the North Wataupa Pond that was constructed in 1916. And some of the research that we did, looking, looking back at this, you know, the North Wataupa Pond before this time, back in the early 1800s, was used for recreational purposes. Once it was identified as a drinking water supply, that was stopped. Even as far as ice harvesting, they used to do a lot of ice harvesting, which would go into drinking water or be used in iceboxes back in the 1800s, early 1900s. And hot, ice harvesting permits were cut off as early as 1915. That's when the State Department of Health told us to, told the city not to issue anymore. Ice cutting, ice harvesting permits, as well as other restrictions, were put in that whole area. Mike, you want to talk a little bit about the, some of these land parcel maps?
Yeah, so we can, we'll, we'll snap through these quickly and, you know, happy to talk at other times about more specifics. But this is a, this is a snapshot of the 1928 Wataupa Reservation. And, and by now, you know, the Wataupa headquarters on Blossom Road was established. And all these parcels, these individual parcels, that you can see all this geometry, all these different polygons, these were all parcels that were bought individually from farmers, from farm families, from woodspeople, from, from, you know, different landowners. And other than the shoreline parcels, which were condemned, and basically the city took the shoreline sort of south of, south of New Boston Road, all these parcels were required, you know, the fee was, was purchased from individuals. But this shows, you can see all the parcels are numbered, the parcels were bought, you know, there was planning that was done, the parcels were identified after, after research as to what, what parcels were in the watershed itself. And the next slide will show you that in 1928, there's almost a, a, there's almost a, a mirror opposite map of the parcels that the city owned. This is a planning map showing the parcels that the city, and I quoted "future consideration." This was actually in 28. These were parcels that the city intended to acquire because these were all in the watershed of the North Wataupa Pond. You can see even these parcels were numbered, they were part of the, the plan and the, and the research. You can see on the right-hand side, I apologize for the poor quality, but on the right-hand side you can see the red ink, and the red ink just, it has crosshatching and it shapes the parcels. So you can see in 28, the idea was to continue, but of course, 28, 30s, 40s, we had, next slide please, we had, you know, the Depression, a war, and there wasn't an appetite and perhaps not even the funding to continue land conservation. So for about 40 years, land conservation didn't cease, but it slowed down quite a lot. It only occasionally happened when there was a real opportunity, you know, maybe a gift or a tax-taking or a, a special parcel. But in 1970, with the, with the Copacoot Reservoir Plan in place, the city again began acquiring land, it acquired all the land that it constructed the, the reservoir on. So the reservoir, just about 550 acres in size, was, was, was constructed and, you know, flooded. We created the reservoir, we owned the land along the sides of the reservoir, the watershed land. In 1988, the moratorium occurred on the eastern section of the city, and land was rezoned from, from in general, R80, R40 to R80, which is to say the land zoning tightened, which would make development less, you know, less of a threat because, you know, now the, the zoning was, was, was reduced. And then that happened in, and then in 1997, and that's what this, this graphic is, this was the city's first open space plan. And at the time, there weren't that many in the region, open space plans. The city got funded by the Buzzards Bay Project. And working with Serpent, actually has an open, you know, get the open space plan done. And this open space plan is in some sense the blueprint for where the watershed protection and Bio Reserve protection really comes from, right from this initial plan. And in the year 2000, you can see just three years later, the Bio Reserve MOU came together. So in that short three-year time span, although those alignments we talked about early on happened, and the parties, you know, put together a memorandum, which took another couple of years to implement. Next slide. So for the city's part, again, it was the, it was the Wataupa Reservation that really helped to anchor this Bio Reserve. What the city, in terms of conservation, what the, what the city was going to benefit from was going to be better protection in the form of a conservation restriction. But part of that conservation was going to identify areas where public access could occur. This exhibit, this is Exhibit C from the, from the original conservation restriction. And you'll see that the, the land shown, and this is a very small scale, there's, there's thousands of acres of land. You'll see to the west is, is Wataupa Resi, Wataupa Pond, North Wataupa Pond. And on the east is Copacoot Reservoir, you can see how the lands, A, B, and C zones are watershed lands, and those are, those footprints represent all the city-owned watershed lands. You'll see Area A, which is in red, is no public access. And that's area in direct contact with the east shore of the, of the North Wataupa Pond. Areas B and C, both are open to public passive recreation. So on the next slide. Well, so a little bit about, I don't know, Paul, did you want to talk about the public health?
Yeah, so a little bit, you know, Mike just talked about restricted areas, and everybody knows that we have areas that we don't, that are restricted to public access. That includes the east and west shores of the, of the Wataupa Pond, the North Wataupa Pond. The dam over at Copacoot is a restricted access area. And, and that's kind of following what's needed to keep our drinking water safe. You know, water resources management, there's certain laws and regulations that we need to follow. Up on the screen, American Water Works, you know, all the way down to EPA, DEP, and the Department of Health. You know, originally, when our watershed and our reservation was created, there was no public access within that. Those look like, those go back to regulations that were set by DPH and the regulations. What the, what the Bio Reserve helped do, the generation of the Bio Reserve helped do, was lift those, those restrictions in certain areas. Again, there are still areas that we do keep restricted just because of the pollutants and stuff that public can, can bring into there. What we have is what's called kind of a dual-barrier strategy. So studies show that recreation is one of the several non-point sources of pollutants that currently threaten the nation's surface water supplies. So it's not only us that's battling this, it's around the nation with surface water supplies. Pollutants that can get in there would be anything from viral to bacteria. You know, TSS, which is total suspended solid sediments from erosion and stuff like that. So two of the things that we do, the dual barrier, would be the watershed protection. So that keeps a lot of that stuff out. And then also disent, treatment and disinfection is how we make sure that our, our public health stays safe with the drinking water. Some of the forest benefits, some of the benefits that we get from having the forest areas within the watershed, protects the watershed from disease. So this is talking about the area of the Bio Reserve. So you look at the Bio Reserve, and Mike mentioned earlier, falls into two watersheds, both Monhope Bay and Buzzards Bay. Copacoot Reservoir is in Buzzards Bay. The North Wataupa Pond is in Monhope Bay. A lot of the forest area in the Fall River Reservation was all part of the watershed. So any water that falls within there eventually makes its way down to the North Wataupa Pond. Anything on the city side, as I said earlier too, we have the interceptor drain that protects it. So what we want to do with the forest, what it helps us do, it helps us protect the shorelines from storm, sequesters any carbon or any impacts, filters out contaminants, supports the environment, it acts as flood control if our ponds get too high. So there are multiple things that the forest helps us, helps us with. So that's kind of a little bit about the history of the, of the, of the, you know, how the Bio Reserve was created, how, how the Water Department became part of it with the, with the lands that we have. Now, we're going to go into some of the amenities and the recreational activities that we have available. And we're going to kind of stick to the Fall River portion. We'll mention, you know, other areas that are either in Freetown or owned by the trustees of the reservation. But again, in a future meeting, if, if anybody would like, we'd be more than happy to come back. And I'm sure the other partners, DCR Fishing Game and the trustees of the reservation would be more than happy to come back to discuss some of their properties and what they have available on their properties.
Right. Thank you, Paul. And thank you, counselors, for, for your patience to allow us to set, let, to set the foundation because it's really important, I think, to have the scientific foundation for why we're protecting, you know, so diligently trying to protect water quality. But this part, and I thank Paul for letting me do this fun part because the, the Bio Reserve really opened up opportunities that, you know, we who grew up in Fall River, we were never aware of. And, and so I'm just going to, you know, start by this first property, which was Tattapanum Trail. This was actually built in 1995, which preceded the Bio Reserve. And at the time, Joe Rego was, was, was in the Water Department. And this was kind of a pilot project, if you will. It was funded by a grant from the Forest Stewardship Foundation. And you might remember Molten Metal, but they actually helped to, to create this as well. Paid for the signage, paid for the, you know, the creation of the trail. It's a mile-long loop, it's right off Wilson Road, parking is roadside. And there were a lot of late naysayers in the 90s that thought the worst. And I think it proved, the Tattapanum Trail proved to be a real success. It's got, it's got self-interpretive, 25 self-interpretive signs and a flyer that you can, you know, you can, you know, learn a little something about. you know, you can, you know, learn a little something about the trees and the other landmarks. Parked by the road. And like most of the recreation trails in the bio reserve, it's open for hiking, for trail running, mountain biking, uh, cross-country skiing, which we might be doing in a couple of days and uh, snow shoeing. So that's the Tadapandam Trail in ninety five. Once the um, once the buyers, once the um, open space plan was uh, was finished, we actually qualified for other grant funding. So um, the Millerbrook Conservation Area and the Quanapog Conservation Area were both acquired with self-help funds. And um, Millerbrook is right across the street. It's the it's the the um, you can see the parking sign on the on the left and the in the in the in the graphic on the left. That's got roadside parking. That trail follows the Millerbrook. It's a it's a it's a beautiful little uh, area that has a old farm. Stone walls and things like that, as well as uh, close to a brook, babbling brook. It's really picturesque. And then Quanapog is um, is also a small trail. Um, on the next, and so those two, um, those two were accomplished by two thousand and two. The next slide will show you that in in the next real you know, the next real acquisition that the city made, or it wasn't an acquisition, the next uh, the next recreation sort of milestone was in two thousand and nine, when the conservation restriction that came about as a result of the bio reserve M O U. When the conservation restriction was signed. From the moment that was signed, I think it was in January of two thousand and nine, from the moment that was signed. Like a switch. All this new land that was uh, all this land that was in the Whatupi Reservation, again, east east of Blossom Road, it became open. So it was important to get some mapping together. And so the bio reserve map was created. And then it within that next year or so. And then in one of the, one of the wayfinding uh, solutions that we employed was these uh, intersection markers. Anywhere where trails, uh, you know, a couple of trails come together where there's a fork or a or a four-way intersection. There's a trail intersection marker that is on the unified trail map. Uh, this is uh, one of our volunteers putting up a sign. And um, so I I I believe you, you, do you both have, um, the the councilors have the maps? I believe they were distributed at another time. But it's a, it's a big, like a roadmap and it'll show the the many intersection markers. It will also show where the six parking lots are for the city's land. And so you know, you, as as we've been looking at the um, at the maps, you you'll see the parking, each each one of those areas we've looked at so far has parking. Parking is also allowed on public roads by lane gates where it's not expressly prohibited. And there are many places where it is expressly prohibited. The only thing we ask and and the environmental police enforces, don't park in front of an emergency gate. Um, and very seldom do people do that because it's uh, there's plenty of room to park otherwise. Um, and of course, we have these unified trail maps, which are recently updated. I think they were updated last year. They show some of the new properties that the city has acquired with the CPA funds. And um, and and that's and that's quite up to date. Um, on the next slide.
Just on those trail maps too, if anybody needs one, uh, they can get them either from the water department office here at City Hall. I always try to keep some up in the mayor's office as well. Michael, Mike Bossier also has them uh, out at uh, out at the reservation headquarters. Um, and we're looking to possibly set up a little kiosk, uh, an informational kiosk potentially to have it uh, down in the lobby at City Hall. So there are numerous spots to be able to get that map.
Right. I think there are some in in on the rack and in the lobby. There's some at the State Forest. Different, different places. So this Homestead, Brightman Homestead Loop is an example of um, a new trail system, a brand new one-mile loop. I call it the bunny loop. It's a great trail for beginners. There's a large parking area. It's right near Reservation Headquarters, so it's not, it's not far from our operations center. And um, the trail loop itself, every tenth of a mile has a has a little bunny and you know, with with a with a tenth mile marker on it. So especially good for for young, uh, for for young children that can uh, can run ahead and and uh, that's a, it's a nice flat, easy to follow trail. And um, little trail etiquette. Paul, you want to grab that?
Yeah, so we just wanted to talk a little bit about trail etiquette and um, you know, what's expected, uh, some tips and stuff. You know, as uh, Mike mentioned, we may be snow shoeing out there within uh, within a couple of days. Uh, we just want to make sure people are aware, you know, be prepared, hug repellent. For, you know, when the summer mosquitoes with West Nile, also, you know, ticks. Um, proper footwear for the season. Hiking boots, um, you know, it's not, they're not paved, uh, you are hiking through a forested area. Maps or trail app. So we mentioned the maps just a little while ago. I know a lot of our trails are picked up on some uh, third-party trail applications that are available on for smartphones and stuff like that. So you know, a spot, you can bring your phone. Uh, but one thing I was talking about with Mike when we were developing this PowerPoint is you know, you can bring your phone, but out there sometimes you might not want to plan on having a uh, phone uh, ability to, you may want to make sure that you have a second means of uh, either your app or communication if needed. Uh, be aware of hunting season. So for most of these areas, besides a restricted area in Copacabana Woods, all these uh, all these are open for hunting. If lost, just find the nearest fire lane, gate or intersection marker. Police and fire do have copies of our maps, so they would be able to respond to those specific spots. Muppets, um, you know, dogs are restricted in a lot of areas. There are areas where they uh, are able to go. Plus also roadway walking with your uh, with your uh, dog is available. Just you know, we always ask if anybody could pick up after their dog as with anywhere. Prohibited some of the things littering. So whatever you bring in with you, water bottles, snack bars, whatever. Just make sure you bring it out with you, whatever is left. You know, outdoor, uh, you know, we asked it not relieve themselves outdoors. Fires, camping, um, those are all restricted within this area. Due to uh, the high risk, the potential risk of forest fires. Uh, we did have a forest fire this past year uh, over next to Copacabana. We did get assistance from D C R. In Fishing Game in uh, the Fire Department and that forest fire went on, I think for a couple of weeks. They they were battling it to be able to get the roots and everything else on, out underground. Uh, cutting trees and picking of greens or flowers are prohibited in the in the bio reserve. Uh, metal detectors use. Removing stones. There are a lot of areas where you may say, oh, that's beautiful stone. That may have some uh, some insestial uh, value where uh, it was either a burial ground or something like that. There are numbers of those uh, the whole entire area. Motorized off where the off will off vehicles. So um, dirt bikes, four-wheelers, uh, everything like that uh, cannot be used on any Fall River properties. Um, so Whatupi Reservation and Copacabana area amenities, another thing that we have over at the Copacabana uh, reservoir. So through the creation of the bio reserve. The Copacabana Reservoir was opened up for shoreline fishing. Prior to that, there was no fishing allowed on the Copacabana Reservoir. Uh, currently you can uh, fish anywhere around the Copacabana Reservoir, uh, except off the dam. So the dam itself is a, is a prohibited area. Uh, that's an extremely large earthen dam. That we, uh, it's a, uh, it's a high hazard dam classified from the Office of Dam Safety. It's something that we maintain and uh, we keep up on. Uh, we use that reservoir uh, currently for uh, supplementing the North Whatupi Pond. Uh, but the Copacabana Reservoir, it's about five hundred and fifty acres. Uh, there's four different parking areas. You can see them on the map and these are located on the button. These are also identified on the bio bio reserve map as well. Mike, do you want to talk a little bit about some of uh?
Is a question?
Yeah, if 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 I can.
Yes, oh, yes, without doubt.
All right, I'm I'm going back to the uh, hunting. Now our trails are open during hunting season? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, so hunting, hunting occurs, we don't we don't close the trails. No state property or conservation land typically closes trails during hunting. Hunting is sort of this um, traditional outdoor sport that carries with it a kind of a pass. So it's up to the, it's up to trail users to know when it's hunting season. And they're not excluded from um, conservation areas during hunting season. There are typically times that are, the hunters might be at dawn and dusk. And so during the day, there's likely no hunters out there. But pedestrian hiking, you know, hikers are cautioned to wear five hundred square inches of um, high visibility orange, just for safety sake. So it is, it is open.
Yeah, well, I'm I'm, you know, I went to school in Maine and I lived in Maine for a number of years, so I'm really familiar with the clothing and the hunting seasons, et cetera. And uh, you know, I think when you live in the environment, you're much more aware of it. My concern is not everybody in in this setting is as aware. So at the beginning, say, at the beginning or opening of these trails. Um, is there any signage that really alerts people to the fact that hunting season goes from this date to this date? And anything that emphasizes? I I mean, I get the fact that avid people, avid trail users probably are aware. But it's the ones who are occasional that that concern me. So is there, is there anything to um, help promote the fact that if you're going to walk this trail, you know, you should be wearing orange or that's something that a hunter is alerted to that they they're that's clear. It's a human being walking through the woods and not an animal.
Uh, Councilor Deon, I'll I'll be honest with you. You you found a chink in the armor. That's something we're not, we 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 we're not currently doing. And I think especially, you know, with so many new people coming out to the woods, that's a great idea. And I think that's a, that's something we'll we'll take home from this uh, meeting tonight. That we really should have at the trailheads and at other points of access or entry, just some kind of an alert during hunting season. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and and again, you know, had it not been for my background in 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 living in Maine, it probably wouldn't have occurred to me either, but um, you just become so acutely a- a- aware of it that when I saw it, it just you know, the light bulb just went on. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Paul, could I have the last slide for just a moment? So I I wanted to point out that this, the map, um, I I I sometimes overplay it, but there's so much detail on this map and and it really can be a useful tool. I just wanted to point out, not only are the parking lots you know, identified. Of course, all the streets are labeled and many of the city's trails are labeled as well. Um, you'll notice that some of the trails have different line weights or even colors. And um, and there's a key at the bottom of the map and it'd be very useful to read the key and to know what all these things mean. If you look at the parking lot, um, the the M B fourteen, I don't know if you can read it, but it's on the west shore of Copacabana Reservoir. That's an, that's a trail intersection marker that's that appears right at the roadside. And then below that, you'll see a lane which kind of leads to the shore of the 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 reservoir. And that's got a little gate symbol. So there's a gate. So on this map, you can see there's a gate. A heavier line trail might be a wider trail, like a fire lane, and the narrow one would be more like a single lane hiking trail. So this and and then the last thing I would also point out. If you look at the bottom of the Copacabana Reservoir, the South Bank, you'll see hatching. And the hatching is consistent with restricted areas. So you're not going to see a lot of hatching, but you are going to see that's a restricted area. So you can't get to the eastern side of the reservoir across the dam because that's a restricted area. There is another way to get to the eastern side of the reservoir from Flag Swamp Road in uh, I'm sorry, Collins Corner Road in Dartmouth through a property owned by the Dartmouth Natural Resources Trust. We sort of have a a little bit of a partnership with them and it's possible to, you know, access that shore from Dartmouth. Last detail I'm going to show on this map is that at the very top, you'll see Quanapog Road and it's checkered. If it's checkered, that means don't take your Toyota Corolla down that road because it's not in great shape. Um, if it's checked, it means it's a um, a a road that's a gravel road and it's really not that serviceable. The other road symbols are asphalt roads and they're and they're quite serviceable. Thank you. Just the short, the snapshot of this is hunting and trapping in all of its seasons is allowed on the Whatupi Reservation from Blossom Road East. This, that includes um, you know, whitetail deer, turkey. Um, and even trapping, though I I can't tell you the last time I saw anyone trapping animals. The trapping may take place in the deepest swamps. This person's uh, holding up a snowshoe here. There were local uh, fi- um, animal uh, or rotten gun clubs that used to stock snowshoe here. Um, that's kind of tapering off due to some legal changes and things like that, but we are open for that. So the next section talks about different events and organized activities. You know, we we've said it's a great secret, but you know, for those in the know. People do use the re- the the bio reserve and particularly the Whatupi Reservation. And a lot of that's because we've been uh, accessible and available to assist people to find it, to facilitate their you know, we're not not necessarily to plan their event, but to facilitate it, to figure out how it it it, you know, whether it's compatible and um, sometimes we might uh, facilitate with environmental police or police detail or some kind of trail work that needs to be done in advance or so on. So we're just going to run through a few of these different things. This year, this fall was the first time that the Florida United Way actually had their kick at kickoff event in the Whatupi Reservation and typically they would have a single event with a lot of people, but they needed socially distance. They needed some space. And so they had a terrific run walk bicycle event that last that that was spread out over four days and it was a great it was a great success. This is, this is the group, um, group of volunteers and participants on Wilson Road. Uh, the big walk, a twelve mile or so hike. It's an all-day affair. It usually circumnavigates a a different part of the bio reserve every year because sixteen thousand acres is really spread out and we're trying to show people different things. And um, the Whatupi ten thirty fifty K. This is the seventh, this would have been the seventh year, I believe, that we've held that. It gets, it it can get as many as a hundred people. It's a registered event. And um, fifty K is a long distance. So it's 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 a, we've got the room to do it. Peskerman's Bird Club is is out there just about every Tuesday looking at migratory birds and some residents. These are, these are American bald eagles that are nesting on the North Whatupi Pond and they have for almost, uh, I think ten, ten or eleven years. So the the bird club comes out there, self-directed. Um, the next slide will have Green, Green Futures that does uh, monthly hikes uh, of a different variety. The Copacabana Rifle Association is um, is in uh, i- i- is is a fully um, a fully organized uh, organization that 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 um, that has some events out at the uh, the rifle range, which is north of the Quanapog, Quanapog Road. Um, and then of course we have a firewood cutting permit program, which which uh, gets people into the woods. Other activities. This, this one's almost legendary. We've been, we've, we've started doing some history and education hikes. Interlochen was one we did a couple of times last fall and had amazing response at Arundack Lane. These are hikes that we've done with supervision in restricted areas. These are areas people typically well, keep, people cannot, you know, uh, access. Um, but we've, you know, through just basically volunteering on the weekends, we've put together with the help of some others such as Bill Goncelo from the Florida Historical Society, uh, to interpret some of the, some of the interesting cultural history out there. Ice House, Spencer Boardman Mansion Foundation, some other things. We have a lot of trail running groups and um, the trolley is is a sample of um, the Espirito Santo's uh, school has an annual spring trolley visit and tour. We'll get three or four groups of uh, you know, grade school students. Take a walk down to the pond, talk about water quality. Um, it's and you know, this is the, this, these are Flint kids who really um, haven't haven't gotten out much in the woods and it's a great experience for them. Then Then things go on that we, we don't even know necessarily. You know, people are out there, nature photography, geocaching, walking their dogs, of course, on the roadways, doing, uh, collecting mushrooms and, and wild edibles. And this is a picture of, um, some folks doing tapping of trees. And, and this is a supervised activity, but, um, these folks made some candies and maple syrup and, um, and, and some other things like that. Just thought, you know, this is not a commercial operation, but it's just a more, more like an educational and cultural phenomenon. I'm working right now with, uh, with Al Lima and the Historic Commission to identify notable historic and, um, and, and natural features. For example, the What's Upper Reservation complex itself is the original blossom farm that got started around the Revolutionary War in, in the 1700s. And the picture on the top right is a cemetery. There's, there's at least a half a dozen rural cemeteries, some of which, um, you know, the, uh, the buried have been, uh, reinterred. But, uh, these rural cemeteries are, are on different, um, uh, and, and, you know, different places and can be, uh, can be researched and, um, investigated. Very quickly, the Trustees of Reservation is one of our bio reserve partners. They have about a little over 500 acres. It's near the intersection of Yellow Town, Yellow Hill and Indian Town Roads. They have two parking lots, five miles of trails. They have what's called an edge shed, which is a little pavilion. It's, it's, um, used for education purposes and, but you could also have a picnic lunch there. They have a beautiful restoration area. Their iconic sort of landscape is the Miller Lane. And it's this, this property used to be the Miller Farm. And so there's just miles and miles and miles of stone walls and cellar holes. And it's, um, it's culturally, uh, culturally significant. Interestingly, on the east side of Yellow Hill Road, this 250 acres is a no hunting zone. So in the fall, when hunting is allowed everywhere else, this one 250 acre spot is the only place in the, in the entire bio reserve that's not restricted land that does not have hunting. So it's a great place. They also allow dog walking, so it's a great place and gets a lot of traffic, especially November, December, because people aren't, you know, having to look over their shoulder, wondering if there's hunting going on in their vicinity. So that's the trustees. You can go on the trustees website to get more information about that. Very popular, there's a 16 car parking lot, uh, on, on Indian Town Road. And then of course the Freetown State Forest, which I think most, a lot of people know about. And, um, uh, this is a, the iconic profile of, uh, of, of, of the Indian, a profile rock, which, uh, as you all know, just a couple of years ago, this rock outcrop kind of collapsed and, um, is no longer, is, is no longer, does not, no longer has that profile. I'll put it that way. There's still stones there, but there, um, there's, there's horseback riding allowed at the, in the Freetown State Forest. There is a dirt bike loop, uh, in the state forest, um, which there's a dirt bike parking lot on Bell, uh, Bell Rock Road. They have other attractions, a CCC monument, profile rock, other things. They have, uh, different events, Fun Day in the Forest is, is, um, is one they've had for many years. Um, and there are also mountain bike races. There's 50 mile mountain bike races that start at the forest headquarters. This, this, I think this might be the last section, but this is a sample of programs that were done when the bio reserve sort of first left the gate. Uh, and the trustees had a bigger, um, um, you know, participation in, in, um, doing some of these things. Just to go through them quick, um, the, the summer conservation youth program was really successful and would have as many as a dozen, um, high, high school age students working in the reservation and other places. There was a high school after school program, um, Vernal Pool Certification and Water, this is a picture of water quality sampling, sampling in the blossom brook. They, uh, there were many more guided walks, bluebird nest box monitoring. Uh, and, um, they were working on some environmental education planning for sort of a, a bigger, a bigger, um, with a bigger arc of activities. Amateur archaeological dig, uh, was something that was supervised and sponsored. Animal tracking, um, great in the, in the winter because of the tracks that are left in the, uh, in the snow. They had a volunteer program. They did have a, a 5K road race. There were programs YMCA, Boys Club, Camer, uh, Family Resource Area, Summer Solstice. So this was just a sampling of some of the possibilities. And so really where I was hoping to end, uh, we were hoping to end our presentation was, so, so many activities have now opened, but yet there's still isn't, there's still a gap of, um, understanding and knowledge and awareness that the bio reserve is there. It's, it's why we're here tonight, um, to share that with the council and, and the committee. And, um, there's a lot of room, um, to do more. And similar to the way that, you know, we, we look at the, 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 the city leaders of 150 years ago, having the foresight to, to, to protect some, to protect so much of the water supply and the watershed lands. I think the challenge today is for us to, um, to, to be the heroes of today and figure out ways to, um, uh, to, to bring awareness, to get people out to this area, to enjoy it, to learn how to take care of it. So these are some ideas that are in the hopper and some ideas that really are being worked on. The biggest one really is the idea of building a bio reserve, environmental education and discovery center. We've done a lot of preliminary work with Roger Williams University on concept. And, um, we've identified at least one property that might be that center. The CPA has shown great, uh, interest in helping to fund that. So this is a property at Blossom Road. It's a farm, this, and there could be an opportunity to acquire this farm, acquire the buildings, adaptively reuse it. And to really have this be a launchpad for a lot of the kind of programming that we need to both orient new folks, get in the school systems, et cetera. The second idea is to connect the Quikashan River Rail Trail to the bio reserve. I'm not saying there's a plan that we know how to do that yet, but, um, it's a, it's, it's, it's kind of a natural to connect a recreation trail to a recreation area. It would have to go through Westport, but that's, but there's some thoughts there. Doing more self-interpretive trails, possibly with interactive apps, those, those kinds of things are out there now. More guided trails, using some of these third-party apps, um, such as AllTrails, uh, is one of the apps. Map My Run is another one I use. Collaborate more with schools and in particular, Durfee is lining up to have an amazing, the new Durfee, uh, an amazing biology lab and, um, the ability to do, um, raise brook trout. And you raise brook trout to release in wild brooks. We have that out in the bio reserve. Better transportation, that's always been one of the big stumbling blocks of getting, especially children out there. Maybe improving roads, there's information on that in the master plan. And then, um, finally, the, the idea of ecotourism, of, of getting people out and cross-promoting with, um, and, and this is really where you're, um, you know, economic development, your tourism, cross-promoting with restaurants, craft breweries, hospitality industries, arts and history venues. When the trustees first opened Copacabana Woods, at the end of the year, they did a survey and they found that visitors, uh, were coming from 28 different communities. That was in the first year of the bio reserve, from 28 different communities, from at least three different states. And when the dust settles on this next wave of development and rail coming in and all of these things we're looking forward to, and, um, it is going to come with a lot of development. We're going to find, I think Paul's giving me a hint, um, we're, we're going to find that this bio reserve is going to be one of the last ecological areas standing and it is going to be a natural draw. It's, it's here for our residents to use now, but it's also a magnet for visitors. And so we really want to combine the best of what Fall River has in the outdoor realm with the best of what the city offers in the city through its, um, you know, through its local businesses, restaurants, et cetera. So with that, this is the finish line of the, of the, uh, of the What's Upper Race. And I thank you so much for your interest in this. And I hope that we can, you know, find loads of ways to cooperate and to really elevate, uh, and, and put the city on the map for the foresight it had and for its, um, its interest in sharing this with others. Thank you very much, counselors.
You're welcome. Um, thank you, Mike. And I thought the presentation, Mr. Frill and Mr. Labassia was good. It gave us all a little bit of history of the water, the water department, how it became to be and what things we have. Um, I know we talked about, as you were going through, lots of questions were popping up. One of them was the fire cutting permit program. You know, when can they do that? And is it Fall River residents first that have opportunity? And how do we get that out there? There just seems to be a gap between everything that you have out there and how we promote it. We have a city website, but it doesn't have any of the maps on it. And, you know, interactive maps, when you talked about having it hooked up to cell phones. I don't know about, Mr. Frill and said that sometimes depending on where you are, cell phones don't work. I know that some people have taken out permits for cutting wood in its loggers, which you want residents to be able to do that first. The signage of where the parking is, it's difficult to see on those maps. But is there signage all around there? Is that something we could do? You know, between that, doing promotion with all the schools, Diamond, Durfee, Bishop Conley, Atlantis Charter School, all the other, um, charter and public and private schools that we have. You know, where funding is low, they look for good field trips that are educational and fun. You know, I would look to, to try to help you as this committee, try to help you to figure out what are ways to get this out there? You know, should we have a meeting and have Don Lewis come in from, um, you know, the IT department to see what IT could do to help promote it?
Just one thing on that, um, we are working currently, we just received a grant through MVP Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. Uh, we're doing, uh, a regional water interconnect study. But one of the things about that is actually, uh, to do a, to develop a website for the bio reserve, uh, which will have our maps on it and stuff like that. So this will be a page that'll be, be able to be linked to the city website. I, I expect that probably within six to eight months to be available. So, yeah, just, just to touch a little bit.
This is what you do all the time. And I know Mr. Labassia has been doing this for years and years and years and has loads of experience. I know you talked about other groups that connect with you. Is it worth having them come forward and saying what their plans are, how you can interconnect with them? Because people don't know, I wouldn't know, I couldn't get in my car today and drive to one of these locations other than the one that's up in the, the reservation, near the reservation house. I wouldn't know where to go. The one on Wilson Road, I don't know, you can park on the street, but I really, I mean, do we talk with Laura and try to get some signage done? You know, how many signs would you need? That type of thing?
Yeah, no, that's definitely something, you know, and something I did want to mention through this is that myself, Mike, we're all, we're water department employees, you know, uh, we're all supported by our rates. We're out there for our waterfront shed protection and, um, you know, uh, the stewardship of our land, uh, that's one of our major reasons for being out there. You know, the recreational benefits, uh, that come from that, uh, is additional time, you know, taken, uh, out of Mike's day and his staff's day, um, to be able to, uh, assist in providing these and maintaining these. You know, something to do with that, again, is all, uh, staff-driven. To be able to take Mike's crew away from their normal maintenance duties, to be able to go and do, uh, you know, put in new trails and stuff like that. It's definitely something that's taxing on, on, uh, on, you know, his normal duties that need to be done. Again, with the signage, you know, very good ideas to be able to get signage out there. Uh, again, I think going through traffic or some other division would be, uh, an excellent way to be able to, uh, get those signs out there, to be able to, uh, put, put in. You know, Mike is always willing to be able to coordinate or work with any other groups or any other departments or organizations to try to, uh, to try to make the area better. Again, as you said, Mike is the resident expert out, so.
So, um, Counselor Pereira.
Deon has a question.
Yeah, um, when you come up 79 and you're coming through that new section of road near Wow, that intersection near Wow, that, there was supposed to be some type of, I believe, interactive map there. There's, there's, uh, you know what the area that I'm talking about? Um, if you take a, if you, you can't take a right, you can only, you can only come up.
Yeah, so from the, so from the Broadway extension just south of Anawan Street, behind the gates of the city, that.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. So, um, I believe that was supposed to be some type of interactive map or kiosk or some form of thing to give people information. Was any of this incorporated in that or supposed to be?
So the bio reserve was never incorporated into, into that. That was, uh, that was part of the Route 79 project that, uh, you're talking about the little, uh, shed roof area that, that's built next to the, uh, next to the rocks and stuff. I believe that the state built that area out, um, with, uh, with the city's thought in mind of being able to put, uh, informational stuff in there.
I believe at the least there, it was, you know, connecting the downtown with the waterfront, et cetera. But it seems to me there would, there would be a great thing to do, to add that to that. I mean, certainly to connect the Quikashan Rail Trail would, would be a great idea with the waterfront being developed. I mean, you, it might help bring more tourism into the city because it's going to give people an additional option. I mean, can people right now come from Freetown through the trail into Fall River, from Dartmouth into Fall River and vice versa? Or is it not possible at this time?
It is possible. There, there isn't, um, there isn't what you would say, a, um, uh, you know, like the red trail, like you'd follow the red trail. I, and if, you know, Mike, I'm going to go back to Counselor Pereira. You, you, you list, you, you gave me like a punch list of eight questions and I, and, you know, the, almost every one of them would need to be, um, uh, dissected a little bit. So, and then, and it's funny because your comment really is not a, not an unusual comment, which is this place is so large, you almost, you almost don't know where to begin. And, um, you know, it's hard to get oriented. As far as the cutting permit goes, um, we haven't really publicized it because it's a tricky program to monitor and, uh, and to monitor because it's, um, but nonetheless, and it's, and it's driven by our need, not the public's need. So in other words, if there are areas that need some, some cutting, like dead trees, down trees, that kind of thing. But, um, that's for both city residents and, um, uh, and, and non-residents. There's no real priority. It's just kind of who, you know, who shows up. There, there has not been a lot of interest in it after the first couple of years. And all the easy wood was cut, um, so that's the way that stands. As far as signage, um, we've been good, uh, we, we've had good luck getting, uh, some grant funding to have signs made. And if you've been out to some of the areas, you'll see we have really nice, high-quality signs. They were made by Baker Sign Company. And, um, every parking lot has a, has a sign. So I'm, I'm not, I'm wondering whether maybe you're thinking some, some, some more distant sign, sort of directing people to us. Um, I don't think we have a good web presence. That's one problem. And I think there's an opportunity, Paul mentioned a grant coming up. If we could get better web presence, um, there's, there's also some ways we could do some outreach. For example, maybe with the chamber, um, maybe, you know, there, there could be some places where we could, um, the trustees had a full-time outreach and education person for a while. And that was why you saw all that busy work between 2004 and, 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 and 2016. That was, that was a large part of a staff person. And so that's, that's almost a communication and education role that we don't really have right now on our staff. So there's, those are some of the opportunity challenges.
Well, I think that that's some of the things that this committee would like to help with. How do we publicize it more? What do we do? And I don't mind, you know, sitting down with you, Mr. Labassia, and continuing this discussion, tabling it and perhaps continuing one issue at a time. Are we going to look at how we promote this? You have Whites that just expanded. You have the hotel over by, um, the old BK's on Airport Road that, you know, do we have pamphlets there? Do we have pamphlets at the Chamber of Commerce? You know, and I'm, I guess Battleship or whatever, would they come back? Is it worth getting ahold of our state reps for signage on the highway to direct people? for signage on the highway to direct people? Because I know that the state, we can't get signs like, we're trying to get signs to have people come off the highway and know where the Vietnam Memorial Wall is gonna be. And there's some issues there. So maybe we could work together with people? I, I have no problem, you know, sitting down with you. I've seen the eagles and been through the reservation because of my nephew Philip. He loves the woods. And he doesn't get lost there. I would probably get lost. Um.
He's a good guy.
I think if we tabled that and maybe we can look at volunteers from colleges that want to get extra credits. Is there a way to do that? To have somebody get credits for helping us and and working on things. I mean, I'm willing to work on it. Um, I don't know if anybody else has any questions. I know we have a city council meeting coming up, so we have to uh, run short, but um, I would ask Council Dion and Council uh, LeBeau. Um, if somebody wanted to make a motion to table, we could certainly continue with that.
Well, Council LeBeau lost her uh, connection. She just texted me. Um, and I would make the motion to table that we could discuss this uh, down, further on down the road.
I second the motion.
On the motion to table, Council Dion?
Yes.
Council Liberty LeBeau? Chair Pereira?
Yes. Is there a motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On the motion to adjourn, Council Dion?
Yes.
Council Liberty LeBeau? Chair Pereira?
Yes.
We are adjourned.